Could you call extra budgetary? All right, so.
I'd like to ask if that means they're ready.
Is it on?
We're good to go. Just hit the single bolt.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the May 15, 2017 meeting of the Town Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, can you please take the roll?
Mr. Dupree.
Here.
Ms. Hendrickson.
Here.
Ms. Saunders.
Mr. Fellows.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Bealy.
Here.
And Ms. Ogless.
Thank you. And just for the record, in the absence of Ms. Ogless and Ms. Saunders, Ms. Hendrickson and Mr. Dupree will be voting members this evening. We do have one item that was tabled due to the status of the application. That's item number five on the agenda, Hugo Properties LLC. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the April 24, 2017 meeting. Any discussion? Hold favor. That's unanimous with one extension? Thank you. The next item, Layton Farm LLC requests the third amended subdivision plan review for Layton Farm subdivision, Phase One, Elmwood Avenue, Assessor's Map, R-57, Lot 1B and 3A. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an item that actually became before our code department, before it wound up to the planning department in terms of, there was a house built on Lot 18 in Layton Farm, and it turned out that upon mortgage inspection, there was a small sort of out, I'm not sure if it's a porch or sort of out portion of the building that was built into about two feet into the rear setback. So it was on their property, but we have a 15-foot rear setback. The property has sort of a hard angle that it encroached upon, and so the applicants are requesting board approval to modify the lot line adjustment, which continues to maintain the 25-foot, required 25-foot setback from the wetland. So it maintains that upland buffer as part of the open space, and that modifies then their rear setback by the necessary two feet to get the structure out of the, that setback area on their building envelope. So fairly small change, fortunate in many ways that the change was able to take place without encroaching upon that 25-foot setback. And so I drafted some brief moment, comments for you, and with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay. Does the applicant have anything to add? Come on.
Vincent Meyer, I'm the owner of Layton Farm subdivision. Just wanted to point out that the size of the enclosure and the studio, the house itself, the foundation, everything is well within the setbacks. It's the second floor overhang. We didn't realize that we got close to this odd angle of the lot came in. If you have a copy of the plan, but I have them here if you need them. And this, part of the home that extends over the boundary is on the second floor, and it's about the size of this podium. It's just the back corner, just the actual corner of the tip of the building that extended over that, that odd property angle. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. We do have the opportunity for public comment. Anyone out there seeing none? Anyone on the board have any questions or comments on this? One of the comments that the staff did have was the recommendation to consider some sort of hardscaping or something along that setback line, given the fact that it is curved, so it may not be intuitive to someone there. Could you speak to that, or whether that's something you might consider?
We do have a few areas in the project that we are required to do that on, ones that are adjacent to sidelines and so forth, but on this particular boundary, there's several thousand feet that abuts the wetland, the upland buffer, that 20, that 25-foot buffer. It's many, it's several thousand feet around this whole perimeter, and we don't have that same kind of treatment around the rest of the project. But what we do have, and of course, in every case, is the many property line iron pins that are set by the surveyors, as shown on that drawing right there. So I think that because it's the same as that throughout the whole project, we'd like to keep it that way if we could, to keep it consistent with all the other places and not just single out this, this one backyard to have that hardscape there, if that's possible. But we certainly understand it's up to the board, and we'll do whatever the board wishes. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I definitely appreciate staff's comment, and I definitely see the logic to it. I do agree with the applicant that, given that none of the other parcels has this treatment, you know, I don't, fairly de minimis change, I don't feel compelled to attach that condition to this particular parcel. Does anyone have any, anything contrary to that? Okay, thanks. So with that, again, this is a fairly de minimis amendment, and I will make a motion that the board approve Layton Farm LLC's request for the third amended subdivision plan review for Layton Farm subdivision, Phase One, Elmwood Avenue, Assessor's Map, R-57, Lot 1B and 3A. Second, you have a second? Any discussion? Okay. Any discussion? All favor. That's unanimous, thank you. All right, once again, item number five on the agenda, tabled. Item number six, Commercial Place LLC requests a master plan review for Enterprise Business Park, Assessor's Map, U-39, Lot 47-1 through 36. Jay?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chairman. See, this is an application the board has seen a few times at this point. As you just noted, this is before the board for a master plan, which is part of our plan development review process. Just by way of background for the benefit of the board and the public, the property is in the Higginson Parkway, and the subject parcel is actually part of a previously approved subdivision going back to the early 2000s. I think it might have been '03 or something, somewhere around that timeframe, for what was at that time, or still is, I guess I should say, a wholly commercial subdivision. Subsequent to that approval, within the last year to three, the town made some adjustments to the Higginson Parkway zoning, which allows for the incorporation of some amount of residential zoning within a commercial development, provided that mixture remain at a minimum of 60% commercial development and 40, no more than 40% of residential. And that's what the applicant's seeking to do. By way of process, as I said, this is a plan development review process, requires three distinct and separate phases. The first phase is a site inventory and analysis, which the board conducted, believe it was last fall or perhaps even late summer. Subsequent to that, the next step is a master plan approval. Board members may recall this application's before you, I believe it was in February, or sort of a sketch plan, intermediate step between site inventory and master plan to really talk about that 40% commercial, 40% residential, 60% commercial split, and we'll get into that a little bit more, but I just wanted to provide a little bit of context. And again, the purpose of the master plan process or phase is to lay out the conceptual design and layout for the development. As we noted previous, with previous reviews of this, this is a bit of an odd piece to go through the plan development, because we have an approved subdivision. We have the road alignment pretty well spelled out, the stormwater systems generally spelled out, you know, those types of things we typically look at. So in that regard, staff really didn't have much in the way of comment on the overall design concept, but I think, you know, primarily where the focus of the board's attention, of course, board members may have other, other thoughts on it, but staff comments were really around identifying, again, that 60-40 split in terms of the use types. And so as board members will recall when they were before you, they had to make, the applicant's team put together sort of a matrix of future build-out analysis, if you will, of the remaining commercial lots, to try to identify how they're going to get to that, again, maintain that 60-40 split. The board had asked for some updates to that, including a floor area, a floor area ratio analysis, and that was been provided, and so that's in your packets for the board to review and sort of consider that build-out. The other thing the board really had a lot of questions on, and staff spent a good amount of time thinking about, is really the administrative side of this, is how do we, going forward, since we can't look into a crystal ball to necessarily know exactly how things are going to build out, how can the town ensure, and the applicant for that matter, ensure that this property will maintain conformance with the zoning, the 60-40 split, if you will, or ratio, even if the residential component of this wants to get ahead of the commercial? We had a number of internal conversations, we had a conversation with the town attorney, and really what was identified was, again, given that this board, or the applicant for that matter, doesn't have a crystal ball, can't know for sure what's going to happen, what we have to, what the board's charge is, is to, and the applicant's for that matter, is to come up with a build-out analysis that makes sense, that, you know, it sort of meets the, what we think is a likely market demand. But further still, and really more to the point, what will happen is that the next phase, the subdivision phase, that's when the commercial development component will get codified. Those numbers that are on the build-out analysis will become a condition of the subdivision approval, so that those commercial lots, if, you know, commercial lots identified have, just picking numbers, 24,000 square feet of office space on it, that's what we need to come before this board as part of a site plan approval. It's really, it's putting a minimum, if you will, on the square footage, commercial square footage on each lot. Could that get adjusted in the future? Yes, but that would require subdivision amendment, again, through a very comprehensive process by the board. So hopefully that helped sort of put that discussion into focus. I know it's pretty nuanced, and it's picking up where we were back in February, but I believe all board members were present at that time, and hopefully I've done enough to also educate some folks in the public as well, but that's what I have for you at the starting point.
Thanks. And I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening. Andrew Johnson, Atlantic Resource Consultants. We are representing the applicant on this project. We have had some rather lengthy discussions on this density issue, and just for the benefit of everybody here, you can see the layout that we're proposing. I'm sure the board is relatively familiar with that now. The intent of the application is obviously to add a residential component in the same, in the same type of manner as the commercial development has happened on, on this lot already, and I think the, the board and members of the public who have been up through Enterprise Business Park will recognize that it's a very high-quality development, it's a very nice-looking and aesthetic development, and the idea here is to add a residential component that is similar in nature to the commercial components on the site, make the overall project a little more marketable, add a little more vitality to the development in the region, and, and give us a little bit more of a spread as far as the development of the property goes. So we've done the residential density calculations. It looks like the property will yield about 258 residential dwelling units, and that's taking a full residential dwelling unit. Obviously, if they went to, to the smaller two-bedroom, one-bedroom mix, the unit count would go up in accordance with the, with the ratios, providing Section 7C, I think it is of your ordinance, so you get more units, the smaller units count as less than one dwelling unit. But the, the primary purpose, again, is to add the residential component off the existing commercial park, integrate those uses, buffer them as necessary, and end up with a high-quality and highly marketable development. The one thing that I would like to add on the 60-40 split, that's something that when we first looked at the zoning, I've got to say, it's fairly unusual to have a zoning ordinance that's written that way. They're typically written where, as a black and white standard, so for example, if you did the 60-40 split on land area, that's something that is solid, that doesn't change. You can say, you know, 60% of the land area is commercial, 40% of the land area is residential, and that never changes over time. The way the ordinance is written is clearly not with that intent, is clearly to have a much more flexible application. There are no timelines written into the ordinance, and I'd have to think that was deliberate. It isn't by accident that that happened, and it allows, as I say, it allows that flexibility, allows the board to look at what is a reasonable development scenario, look at that on a judgment basis, and decide whether they think it is appropriate, the number of residential versus commercial units that are proposed for a lot. That puts a bit of a burden on the board, and I have to say, there are many places where I don't think this would work very well. I think Scarborough is one of the places where it would work well, because there is a, there is enough, I don't want to butter up the board too much, but there's enough of a level of sophistication here to understand what the, what the overall objective is. And I think it is very difficult to draw a hard line in the sand and say, at this date, you need to meet the 60-40, or even, you know, in two years' time, or in three years' time, you need to meet the 60-40. And there's some very good market reasons for that, and the one thing, we've been very fortunate, and we've, we've represented a number of different clients across different market sectors. What we typically find when people are asking for site selections is many, and with a possible exception of national retail chains, many of our clients ask us not just for a site that is going to accommodate their current needs, but is also going to accommodate their future needs. That's very typical, particularly of higher-end businesses like research and development, which is, would definitely be a market sector that would be attracted by Enterprise Business Park, and some of our recent experience on that is that people come in looking for a site where they can build, but also they want potential to expand 50%, sometimes up to 100% on the same site. And there are very good reasons for that, particularly in that R and B sector. Some of those folks are paying north of $300 a square foot for their buildings, so their budgets are fairly tight. One client I recently worked with actually ended up in Saco, they were looking in Scarborough. But they're looking at a building where their budget's fairly tight, but we're looking for a site which can accommodate twice that size. So I just want the board to bear that in mind, because if you go the route of saying, this lot has to be built out to 24,000 square feet, for example. If somebody comes in, they want to build 15,000 square feet and then expand at a later date to 24,000 square feet, they're going to look for a site that can accommodate that, but they're not going to come in with 24,000 square feet at the start. And you have to look at somewhat at the consequences of some of these things before you fire ahead and do them. And my concern when I, when I read that proposal was, you're going to kind of diminish the marketability of the commercial sites by doing that, and then you end up with the unintended consequences of more vacant commercial sites, and then you're stretching even further to get to the 60-40. So you just have to be a little careful about how we approach it, and what lines we draw in the sand, because I think the intent of the ordinance is for it to be flexible, to look at potential expansion, there's certainly potential expansion on the existing lots, and if you look at the density of the existing lots compared to what could be built out, they're very low. I mean, they're underdeveloped, a lot of those sites are on there now. So I would encourage, you know, some further discussion on what, what the possible ways of, mechanisms of getting to that 60-40 split are, but I would also encourage a flexible approach to that, to enable the project to move forward, to bring in business, to bring in development to the town, and to let people, let market decide basically what needs to happen on those lots and what can happen on those lots. I'll leave it at that now, because that's probably enough, enough of me saying what I've got to say, but I welcome questions from the board at this point.
Thank you. Before we do that, anyone like to make a public comment on this item? Someone come out and introduce yourself? All right, see any takers? Nick, would you like to kick us off?
Okay. I have just a quick question on the grid you have here, back of the, what, number 30? Lot 30? That's occupied space, is it correct? This is veterinary office, who's that?
I'm going to defer to Jason Vatiadis, who's also here. He's a little more familiar with that table.
Yes, yes, Jason Vatiadis, Atlantic Resource Consultants. Yes, that's coded wrong, it is existing, not proposed.
And so my follow-up question to that is, if the numbers and percentages now thrown off, would that, you know, if that was included or excluded from your percentage analysis here?
Well, right, so that actually skews it in our favor, because that's much, we're not banging, you know, no, yeah, we're not killing that.
Is it included with the current numbers we see at the bottom or?
Yes, because it's coded by, yeah, when the, when it counts, it actually formatted the counts by color, so yes, yeah, so it does throw those off a little bit.
Okay. That was the first thing. And I appreciate your comments. You know, I think we've all probably tried to work out the best solution around here, and the 60-40, I'm sure there was some, some logical reason why it was codified that way. I'm not as hard and fast stuck on a 60-40. I think, you know, the overall concept here is to make sure that we're using this area largely for commercial, but do allow residential, and that's a, that's a recent change, based on what market was telling us and what the community had for us as feedback, and what could make the Higginson Parkway zone a little more developable. So, you know, the idea of throwing residential in here, I, I don't personally feel the hard need to make sure you stick to a 60-40. What I don't want to see happen, though, is that for the sake of being able to develop the residential, is that we overestimate what realistically could occur here for commercial. And I think that's the other part of this piece that we really need to hammer down tonight. And I believe, the last time you were here, I suggested that we take your current averages and use that to kind of be your gauge. So I saw a span of numbers at the start of your, I believe you said you could have between 200 and 22 to 400 and something units potentially in here for residential? Let's see if we can pull it up. Do you, do you know what I'm referring to?
Yes, so the, so there's two calculations. There's the, the net residential area calculations, which are your standard for any sort of subdivision, and those are dwelling units and not, so the floor area is irrespective of, of the number of actual units. That's just a, you know, you can, you build a bunch of penthouses, I guess, and have 30 units. So that, so we sort of have to meet two sort of standards. One is the net residential area standard, and the other is the 60-40 count.
Okay.
I think it's 248, right?
250, 250 more. So what is your anticipated build-out as, as your plan is coming forward right now?
So that's a great question, and this is something I think that we might all be looking at the tree and missing in the forest. We don't actually know what the residential build-out is going to be. There's nothing specific proposed, and certainly, there was one discussion with a, with a developer in the past, I think they even had discussions with town staff. They were, they were looking for a specific number, and that number is actually lower than the numbers that are provided in here. So we basically, we, we look to set the edges, like set the cap, that this would be the, the most residential area you could, you could conceivably get, based on the fact that if you you built the rest of the lots out at what they could, from an, from our professional perspective, could be built on each of those lots. So the interesting thing is, someone could come in here with a site plan application, you know, our next step could be, we only have 280,000 square feet of residential area spread out over those eight or nine lots. And so that would really kind of take the onus off, all of us to sort of meet those numbers, because that would really lower the fill you would need in the commercial area as well. So just another variable, I think that we have to be conscious of as we go forward.
And are you, are you proposing to build the residential side in phases eventually? Or was this all at, all at one shot?
I have to imagine that when it does get built, it will be in phases, but typically your first phase has to be a big enough chunk to sort of recoup your infrastructure costs and then all that. So, you know, maybe the first 60% gets built, and then, you know, you add on increments after that. But I really couldn't tell you at this point, because we're not at that stage yet.
As far as layout goes, I don't really have a whole lot to comment on. It's pretty straightforward. And I'll, I'll pass the tongue for, I suspect I'll have more questions in a little bit.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So what you're saying is, you really don't know whether you're going to have 10 residential buildings or not. It could be less.
Yeah.
Depending on who comes forward.
It could be smaller buildings with, you know, eight-unit apartment buildings, you know, laid out in a more campus style, or, or, that, basically everything you see here is maximum, maximum building size, maximum structure height. It was, it was just, I don't know that I feel comfortable going through master plan approval, showing you something, and then coming in and it's twice as big as you'd expect. So we sort of reached for the upper limit right at the get-go, so you'd know that.
Well, I appreciate that, but our dilemma is trying to speculate what's going to happen on the commercial side. And it would seem to me that, I mean, I think the concept is really terrific. And, but it seems to me that we would be better off trying to deal with this once we know who might be developing the residential side of this project.
I agree with you, and I think that's really what Jay, if, you know, maybe I misunderstand sort of what Jay's memo is getting at, but he, I think, Jay, please step in if I'm wrong, but he's saying that when we do have a layout to come before in site plan, that there's going to be a way, as you said, to sort of code or add that up by, you know, whether it's deed restrictions, or just something on the, you have to amend the subdivision plan so that it's part of the record, and that you know going forward that these are the thresholds that we were predicted to hit, you know? And those may change between now and when we bring in the site plan approval, based on, or site plan application, based on what's proposed to be built.
I might just chime in. I think Jason's got it about, about right, where, I think it's important, one of the things that I meant to sort of mention at the outset and maybe didn't get to quite enough is recognizing that there is a difference between the master plan phase and when they come back for the formal subdivision and site plan phase. I think at this point of master plan, it is, it's really, is the conceptual, as I already heard, is the conceptual plan layout in a manner that's consistent with the overall intent of the ordinance? Are the, are the infrastructure components laid out in a manner that won't prohibit future development, or potentially impinge upon other developments? Like, one of the big elements that we've talked about at earlier stages is, when the original subdivision was approved, there was a remaining right-of-way that sort of led to the properties to the north that we know now are wetlands that can't be accessed, and that really wasn't a viable future connection. And now, you know, we're looking at these other, another potential future connection to the west of the property into what's now Scarborough Downs lands, that does seem to lend to a more realistic and reasonable expectation for a connection to Haggis Parkway. So I do think, you know, at this stage, you know, we don't need to get so hyper-focused on the exact build-out analysis and scenario, but I do think it's worth a discussion, be sure, you know, have the board provide comments in that regards. But I think we'll really drill into those details and get those administrative checks and balances in place and on the books at the next review phase.
So we're basically speculating on both the residential side as well as the commercial side at this stage?
Well, again, at this stage, you're not approving, they're not approving the amount of development. You're not, you know?
You're trying to come up with the 60-40 ratio, right?
Again, it says, I don't think that needs to be locked in at this point. It's, you know, has the applicant, again, sort of through the site inventory phase, being that first part, identifying where the good upland buildable lands are, and where those natural cultural resources are that we want to protect. Those were sort of identified during the site inventory phase. Now the master plan phase is again laying out the general con, layout. So regardless of how big a footprint these buildings are showing, that isn't necessarily what will occur at site plan and subdivision. It's, you know, it's just, will the general layout be generally consistent with that pattern of development? So what you're, what a master plan approval would do at this point is layout, it would be providing a foundation for where the road network would go, where structures would be placed. How many units are in those structures, exactly how big those buildings are? That would be sort of the detail that gets picked up with the next phase of review, that, in that, that site plan subdivision phase.
Okay, let me ask you this, Jay. In your notes, again, dealing with the commercial side, I think I read where the town attorney recommended having a provision where, for instance, like on lot 27, 28, any future building would have to be 14,700 square feet?
I think-
And you want that to be, I mean, I don't know whether that's-
That's, that's the next phase.
... discussion at this, or that's the next phase.
That would be sort of the next phase. And again, I think there's a bit more nuance in it at that next phase. I don't know that it necessarily has to be lot 28 has to be 14,000, and lot 27 has to be, you know, 23,000, you know? If they came in slightly different, that could be okay. So, so there is more nuance than what's written in here. I was really just trying to get the general cons, again, where we're at master plan, we're at sort of the, this broad umbrella stage of the review. I think that was, that was sort of the concept behind what was trying to be articulated.
Okay, I guess, just to wrap up on my end, I, I guess I would agree with everything to this point, because we see this potential to accomplish everything that has to be done. But again, it's just speculation until we have some firm projects, you know?
Thanks. Now I'd just add quickly, briefly, that as I understand it, beyond that sort of conceptual layout and making sure that the infrastructure is set up correctly and that the groundwork has been laid, so to speak, we also have at least a sense of how, of what, of what one administrative kind of protocol might look like. And we're not, we approve, if we grant master plan approval tonight, we're not, we're not endorsing or locking ourselves into that particular process, but I think that, that legwork that was done at least demonstrates to us that there, you know, there are a couple of different ways that it could be enforced, and I think we'll need to look at that more closely and balance things when we get to the next stage. Rick, do you have anything?
I, yeah, I actually do. And it's not specific to this project, but it's related to this project. So I think, based on what I've heard from Jay and when I read, this is just a conceptual overall, we're giving, we're looking at the idea of where they're going and saying it looks okay. But on page four, it says there's potential for 220 to 440 residential units, right? So, you know, if each of the 440 residential units has one child or two child, that's potentially, if I do the math real quick in my head, that's 880 students. At what point do we look at the number of apartment buildings? Because these are apartments, right? These aren't, these aren't single-family residential dwellings. So at what point do we evaluate how many residential, how many apartment buildings we've approved in the last six months and say, we're going to run out of space in the school, or, I mean, we're already, and I'm just looking at this thing, and that's 440 units is a lot. And maybe not this, as a lot.
I'll take a stab at that. I mean, I, my view on it is that, that's, that's not really under the planning board's purview, at least directly, and that we enforced ordinances and that the, ultimately the town council and the, and the planning professionals crafted the ordinances with public input. And certainly, I'm not disputing at all that there's a broader, there's some broader issues there. But it's not typically something that this board engages in directly. That's not to say that we won't, we won't hear some of those concerns, and that they're not valid, but it's not really a, something that's supposed to directly guide our decision-making.
Right. And again, I don't want this particular applicant to, you know, be the camel's back, but at some point, I think, you know, I have to take another look at the comprehensive plan or something, but it seems like not just our town, our towns are doing it as well. I mean, you drive through Westbrook and other towns, and there's more and more of this, this apartment buildings, which you can put a lot more people in an apartment building than you can put in a single-family dwelling in the same area, because the single-family dwellings require a certain lot size for an apartment building in a complex. So I think at some point, we really have to look at that. And the planning board is the, we're approving these, we're approving these developments. So if it's not us, then I'd like to try to figure out who it is. Maybe it's in the comprehensive plan, and I have to look at that.
And that's a good opportunity to make a plug for the first public kickoff of the comprehensive plan is next Monday night, right in Fish Chambers at 6:30. So look forward to seeing everyone there, but Tuesday night, thank you. I've been corrected, Tuesday, the 23rd. But I think your point's taken, and I know a number of those types of conversations at higher levels, sort of conversation happened at the council level. Not too many months ago, there was a joint meeting workshop that the council had on that exact issue, and so those conversations certainly are occurring and ongoing, but...
And I will say, I'm sorry, I'll turn it back up here in a second, but I'll say, as someone who also serves in the long-range planning committee, that, that has also had a role in some of the, some of the modifications to the zoning for this, in this area and elsewhere, that there has been a lot of deliberation and a lot of thought given to some, you know, generally incremental changes to some of these things with those and other concerns in mind. And there've been, you know, the council has weighed in on that, and they'll continue to do so. So there are a few different venues for that, and we absolutely do end up grappling with that on a sort of a project-by-project basis. But it's sort of a policy level, a policy question. It's something we don't generally get too directly involved with, but I definitely appreciate the consideration.
Well, I would look, I guess, towards whoever, you know, is involved in the comprehensive plan to maybe provide direction to the council on, hey, you know, we're getting close to our maximum capacity, and we have to start thinking about what that means. Everybody judges the school, or one of the criteria for judgment of school is the size of the classroom. So do you have 20 kids in the classroom, do you have 35? And, and I think that, I spend a little bit of time at the high school, and the classrooms are getting full. So as far as an overall conceptual plan, I think it's fine. I would like to, as Jay pointed out earlier, to make sure that we don't just build all the residential and then leave the land there hoping that someone moves in commercial. And I, I know that's not the intent of the applicant, or, but you can't predict what's going to happen, so I think you'd have to phase it in so that we build a certain amount of residential until, if that's the direction that we're doing for that area. So, yeah, I would, I don't have any problems with that conceptual plan. I would like to talk to someone about how many units we allow, not just for this, but for the future.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't have a big problem with the conceptual plan, but I do have a couple of questions or observations, and that is, I believe there is another exit, out onto Route 1 that you've planned?
Yes, so there's, there's two approved exits, or entrances to Route 1, actually.
Actually, that's my question. Is it just an exit, or is it called an entrance and a exit, because then that stops to stack up the traffic?
I believe this is right out, right in only. This one down here, and that was part of the original approval, traffic movement permit, all that stuff. The question as to when this one gets built, I think long-range planning, and I can't, I can't promise anything, or I can't see that far in the future, but, you know, it makes a lot of sense to connect in if anything ever happens with Scarborough Downs parcel. This connection makes a much stronger case for that interconnectivity that we all look for. I hope that that happens at some point in the future. And as Jake talked about before, you know, we took out the connection up to Three Diamonds Realty's property, because it really was predominantly west through most of it, but there is a strip of uplands that come in through and would connect that in the Haggis Parkway, so sort of a long answer to a short question. Yeah, it's a right, I believe, 99% sure, is right out, right in?
I did see that it was right out, but I didn't see whether it was one way at that And I'm, like, I'd ask you to think about having that one way. The traffic is already kind of tough there, and that would be an exit. The other question that I had, you said that the connection is going to ultimately connect to Haggis Parkway, or?
Right, that, that would be my expectations. We don't know, you know, we don't control, this project has no sort of say in what happens to that property, but we do have to allow for that. So if anything ever happens on Scarborough Downs, I should reword that more, we would, that connection would be available for, for this project to connect into the Scarborough Downs parcel.
Which would then connect-
And where that goes.
Would connect to Haggis Parkway, okay. The, one sort of notion that I had is I started to try and figure out the square footage and how the, of the buildings and how that was going to be used, and listening to what was said about the need for folks sometimes to build, to expand. I was wondering, and the possible option might be to use some sort of a concept of a bank of square footage. In other words, if you sell off, let's say, Lot 1, and you get 100,000 square feet on Lot 1, that kind of can be, could that be used as, is it possible to think about it being used as a drawer or a bank, so that another couple of lots going in, or buildings going in, then you've got the flexibility to be smaller? And it might take a lot of juggling, but it would, it might allow some of the flexibility and credit for the larger buildings that do go in. And then the other thing is, yeah, it is going to be difficult to figure out a phase in, so that we're comfortable that we are going to end up with the 60-40. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first off, I'm, like, as I think my fellow board members are, I'm generally pretty comfortable with where we are conceptually, in terms of the master plan phase here. As was noted, this site has been vetted quite a bit in the past, and probably there are some changes now, and I think we've, we've highlighted those, and the modifications that have been made are definitely appropriate. that have been made are definitely appropriate. I share the concern about wanting to make sure that we don't get too far out ahead of ourselves in terms of residential getting way ahead of the commercial, and we're certainly going to have to work together to figure out, to come up with some kind of a mechanism for enforcing that desired ratio going forward. And I, I'm reminded somewhat of a couple of contract zones that we have in town where have fairly large scale, it's all residential, but, you know, there are commitments that have been made, that were made at the outset regarding affordability and maybe some mixed-use components, and it's been a bit of an iterative process with some amendments that have come back in, and it has put a bit of a burden on, on the board and the council. But I think the town collectively has been pretty reasonable and flexible and recognizing changing circumstances, but I think we always try to kind of keep our eye on the ball and make sure we're not straying too much from what the underlying commitments are. So, you know, it's helpful to hear what Jay had to say about that one potential administrative mechanism. I appreciate what the applicant said about some of the maybe unattended consequences of that, and chilling effects that that could have on marketability and things like that. So, you know, I hate to feel like we're kicking the can down the road, but we're, we are at a preliminary phase here, and I think everyone is on the same wavelength generally in terms of what the challenges are, but also what the desired kind of overall proportion is. So I'm confident we can work that out going forward. And again, to this, to the commoner concerns about, you know, kids in the schools and things like that, those are absolutely valid concerns, and, you know, we'll certainly have ample opportunity in various settings to, to discuss that. And I know it is something that the town does take seriously and are working to really quantify that in as sort of scientific a way as possible, knowing that things do change. So I think that's about all I had at this point. Roger, just something else?
Just for point of information, so the next time this project will be before us would be either with a developer for the residential side, or if somebody wants to develop something commercial. Is that your assumption?
Sounds like a fair assumption, yeah. Nick, did you want another bite at this?
I was just playing with the numbers, so I think you can wait till the next meeting, but it's definitely challenging and interesting all at the same time. And I just want to clarify something. What we have here for the lots that are undeveloped as far as the floor area, this is max projection, correct?
Yes. And that is helpful to know, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Yeah, and I don't really have anything else to add. I think we've covered this pretty well, and with that, I'll move to approve Commercial Place LLC's request for a master plan approval for Enterprise Business Park, Assessors Map U39, Lot 47-1, 336. If we have a second, any discussion? On the paper. That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being flexible and kind of, you know, agreeing to work it down the line.
We'll look forward to seeing where we go from there. Thanks. Item number seven, Resera Properties LLC requests a subdivision and site plan review for a residential subdivision at 79 Muzzy Road, Assessors' Map R55, Lot 18. Okay?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. As just noted, this applicant is before the board for a, it's really sort of a subdivision and site plan review, the subdivision in the fact that the applicant's proposing 84 residential units within seven buildings. But the predominant sort of review criteria that we'll be applying is our site plan review criteria, but it does require sort of that subdivision process, which seeks a, or requires a preliminary review and approval by the board before moving to a final review and ultimately approval, should they meet all the standards. Just by way of background, this applicant was before you back in December of 2016 for a sketch plan review. Board members may recall, the property is in a couple of different zones. It's in the TBC 3, and there's a small section of VR 2, Village Residential 2, and also in our Aquifer Protection Overlay District. Subsequent to the sketch plan review, the applicant submitted to the town for a pre-application review, which is a formal review process that's fully vetted by staff and peer reviewers, civil engineer, the town engineer, town planner, and traffic reviewers. We provided a host of comments. The applicant resubmitted with some responses to those comments back a few months ago. There were some issues with that application, so we didn't put that on the agenda, but we actually did another full round of staff and peer reviewer. So this has been pretty well-vetted by staff, and so you'll note that we don't have, you know, our comments are a lot shorter than they might typically be for a project of this size, for the first time coming before the board, but that's, again, due in part to the process we've been through. So at this point, just a couple of things I'll highlight, and then certainly turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things, so as I noted, they're seeking 84 units through seven buildings. The applicant is seeking, as part of the allowances within the underlying zoning, or the, with the zoning, to take advantage of the density provisions within our ordinance. So they're actually seeking 10, 10 additional units over and above the standard density by taking advantage of both the transfer development rights provision and seeking particularly an INLU fee payment, as well as the affordable housing component allowance. So a couple of interesting items there. Other sort of, in addition to the onsite development, it should be noted that there's quite a bit of offsite development in terms of what is occurring along Muzzy Road. The applicant's proposing a left-hand turn lane along Muzzy Road, as well as a significant pedestrian connection to the Gallery Boulevard, which currently has a full sidewalk and transit stops as well. And, and so those, we're still looking through some of those details, but again, I think we're generally happy. Third item, I just note in our town engineer, these are really thoughts that we had in terms of the stormwater controls, and really looking at the design and trying to maintain as, as much of a buffer from the onsite stream as feasible, understanding that there are some development constraints, but trying to look at at least modest alternative designs in that measure, and Angela may have more to comment on that as we go along. I guess the final thing I would just address at this point is the other significant component on the site is that there are a number of buildings, and the architectural review, and the applicant's done a nice job of providing sort of four-side representation of the buildings, so just be sure the board is sort of looking at that and those details. Again, we have a few other staff comments embedded here in our, in our memo, as well as you should receive a memo from Woodruff and Kern and Goral Palmer, who is looking at the traffic issues. That, I don't know if Angela wants to chime in now, or, I guess since I said it, why not, right?
Why not? I just wanted to point out, staff comments that we talk about, I did bring up, the, the outfalls are within the 75-foot step back, and I know I've talked to Tony about this a little bit, that, I know that is permissible through DEP, and I understand that, but I know the board has also focused on enhancing buffers and other watersheds. I know we focused primarily on our urban impaired streams, but they weren't all urban impaired before, you know, a lot of development came in. So it's also, it's just a good opportunity, I think, for the board to consciously look at that and saying, okay, it makes sense for this development due to cost or, you know, restraints on the elevation. So I think there's an opportunity, I think, to revisit some of the design of the BMPs to say, if we lift those up, can you pull some of the outfalls away from the stream and enhance that buffer? And that is just an exercise that I think, even if we can't get to the 75-foot, maybe there's something that we could do to help that buffer. And maybe there isn't, but I don't think that's been investigated, I guess, at this point. So I think there, there might be an opportunity, at least to take a look, and it'd be worth the board to chime in on, on their thoughts.
Okay, thanks. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tony Pansioko, Altice Civil Solutions, here on behalf of Resera Properties. I think Jay gave you quite an overview. I'll touch on a couple of things here, and then maybe we'll get right into some questions. Property's located at 79 Muzzy Road, 11.67-acre parcel. As some of you might be aware, majority of the parcel was, was rezoned to TBC 3 a while back. Since then, the applicant has a portion, a separate property under contract, which is this area here, a portion of that is in the VR 2 zone. Site is, majority of the site, there's a field meadow that kind of runs the center of the site. It's wooded on both the east and west sides. On the east side is a stream that runs the length of the property. It's kind of fed, it's fed by the culvert across this Muzzy Road, right here, right there. Large wetland area is mapped on the site. You can see that area in green is wetlands. DEP did go back out there with Mark Hampton to reassess a portion of the site to confirm the wetlands. As previously mentioned, seven buildings, 84 units, 12 units per building, half one by room, half two-bedroom. We've got approximately 890 feet of roadway with 147 parking spaces. The intent is, right now, is for this to be maintained as private. In terms of utilities, we've got public water and sewer. We did receive approval from the Scarborough Stantry District for the flows. We don't have that letter yet, but that will be in the next submission. We've been, we met with Portland Water District to discuss service of the site, or working our way through that. Underground electric and gas will also serve the building. Each building has a utility room, right in the center here, that faces the street for ease of access to connecting utilities as we come up the road with them. In terms of DEP, we're going to create approximately 2.78 acres of new impervious area with a disturbance of about 4.5 acres of land, 8,849 square feet of wetland impact, basically along the edge of the road here, where we infringe a little bit right here in this parking lot. That will require, in terms of permitting, stormwater permit, Tier 1 wetland impact permit and a permit by rule for the pond outlets, as Angela had mentioned. We did receive some feedback from DEP that did approve the permit by rule for the pond outlets, and I forwarded that along this morning. I don't know if anyone's actually seen it, but it did get forwarded along, and we can discuss that outfall a little bit more. Also, the project will require a, a left-turn lane coming this way on Muzzy Road, as well as a driveway entrance permit. And we, we met with staff and DOT, and we're still working through some of the design issues for that, so we'll continue to keep people involved and work through it. Essentially, that, that's kind of an overview of where we're at. Be happy to answer any questions, or if you want to go through a few comments, where the board just seems appropriate.
Okay, thank you. We have the opportunity for a public comment on this item. If there's anyone here who'd like to come up and give their name and address, come on up to the podium.
I am Shirley Curry, and I'm a butter. I, I'm at 91 Muzzy Road. And when I heard this first talked about at the Scarborough Baptist Church, one night I came over and talked to a few people in the neighborhood, I made a couple of comments. First of all, I'm not an architect, so I don't always understand all of the terminology, but I'd like to know what pond outlet is.
We'll, we'll take note of, of your questions and comments, and then we'll make sure that it gets, that they all get addressed.
That stormwater ponds, is that what that means?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, what I'm mostly concerned about is my, the property that I have here is private property that I'm trying to become as wildlife sanctuary. And the thing that concerns me most is that if you have a lot of apartments here, you know, I've had problems with people on the Honein Road, because they think my woodlot is a great place to dump stuff. They think it's a great place to, to empty their swimming pools. They think it's a great place to, to walk their dogs. And I'm trying to keep wildlife refuge here. And so my, my request is, and I did mention it to them, and I don't see it on here, that there be some kind of a fence along my property line to keep people from using my property as their backyard. That's all I'm really concerned about. I'm trying to keep it as undeveloped and as safe a wildlife as I can. And people seem to think that if there are woods in their backyard, that they can use whatever they want. People camp there. I've had to deal with that, you know? So I, that's my concern. I would like to see some fence in here and here, so that people realize that that's private property and it's not for their needs.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will note that we, everyone on the board should have received a copy of an email from Scott White of 5 Honein Road, raising some concerns about water infiltration and how this project might potentially affect that. I think everyone should have that. That'll be entered into the record as well. With that?
Question?
Sure.
So, I don't, where is 5 Honein Road? I, I'm looking after your brothers.
540 Road is, is the second house down on the right.
Oh, where?
Okay. So it's, well, it's not showing yet, but roughly in that area.
Thank you. Okay, good, thanks. Start down at the send this time. Rachel, do you have any?
I have a couple of observations, and that's sort of the things, when you came, when this project came before, is before I had asked for something that would allow our folks, would allow the people their place to gather, and I, I do note that a couple of gathering areas have been put in there to create community, and I think, I thank you for following through with that. I also note that it is pet-friendly, and you're proposing a dog park?
Yes, there's a fenced-in area, right down in here. Oh, there's it.
Okay. And I appreciate that, too, and I'm sure the tenants will as well. I do have a question on the, the building designs that you thoughtfully provided us with, and my question is, are we going to have different colors to the houses or the apartment buildings, or are they all going to be the same?
I'll defer that to her.
One of the things I don't want, frankly, is a march of large buildings that kind of all look the same, so.
Good evening, Rocky Risbera. Our intention actually was to, to have the buildings all the same color. We've got, our architect has worked with us on some colors, and my brother and I feel quite strongly that it looks better to have the buildings one color. We actually have a project in Westbrook going right now that, we had some input from the planning board, they felt that it did not look better, and wanted two different colors, and so we're doing that. So I'm not saying that, no, we won't do that, but at this point in time, our plans are to move forward with, with one color combination. Jay's actually put some renderings up, up on the board, and that's, it's a, it's sort of a sage green with, over a sterling gray color, and we feel that it breaks the, the scale of the building up, and, and it should look very nice. We'd like to keep it uniform, but we would obviously be willing to work with the board on that.
All right, I appreciate that, and I hope you will, from my perspective, I would like to see that. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks. Rick?
I think I'm going to leave the, the discussion in a sense to the chair. Overall, I think the, the concept and the buildings look good. Overall, I think the concept and the buildings look good. Maybe, Jay, can you explain to me the extra 10 units and how that works?
Sure. This is a very easy site, right, Rocky?
I read it, but I.
Yes, no, we had to work through the net residential density a few times. So, broad brush, you know, the way you start a project is you come up with your net residential calculation. Start with your growth lot, and then there's certain things you have to subtract out. You take that net area, that net residential area, multiply that by the base number of allowed units per lot, uh, per acre, I'm sorry, which I believe in this area is five. So in that, and I don't have the numbers directly ahead in front of me, but that got the project to roughly 32 units, I'll say. And then, probably 34 units, 38, 38 units, all right? So that was their base net residential density. Then, the ordinance goes on to allow for density bonuses. And there's two ways you can take advantage of density bonuses, and the applicant is combining the two, which again is also permissible. One is by doing what we call our development transfer program. And either you buy additional density by preserving lands in sort of the low-growth areas of town, roughly west of the Turnpike, or you pay an in-lu fee of $20,000 per unit that goes to a dedicated fund for land conservation purposes. The applicant has chosen to take advantage of the in-lu fee component, so, to purchase, to get five additional units. So they'll be paying $100,000, presuming the board approves this concept, $100,000 to that dedicated fund. Then the applicant identified they wanted to get five more potential units. So they took advantage of the other provision around affordable housing. What that allows is one additional unit per acre, provided that at least 40% of those units are affordable. So of the five additional units they're now getting through the affordable provision, three are allowed to be market rate, two need to be maintained as affordable units. And our housing alliance has developed sort of a, the principles around how those would be maintained and sort of administered by the town and reported to the town on an annual basis. And there's some fine tuning that needs to be worked out between now and potential final approvals, but the general parameters are in place for that. So, the base 38, the base 38 units they got, plus the 10 additional, brought it up to 48 units. Then, through the magic of Section 7 of our ordinance, I think 7F if I'm remembering right, allows for different unit sizes and types to be counted as fractional units. So if you have one bedroom that's 750 feet, square foot, feet or less, that counts only as a half a bedroom, half a unit, I'm sorry. And if you have a unit that's two bedrooms and less than 1,200 square feet, that counts as two-thirds of a unit. So what the applicant has done is said, of their 48 whole units, they're crafting, half of those units are going to be one bedroom. So that's, and then, and then the other half are going to be these two-thirds units, and that math brings you up to 84 total units. So it's slightly nuanced, to say the least. So I hope that answered your question?
It did very thoroughly. I don't feel bad I didn't understand it the first time I read it now. And I'm thoroughly impressed that you got through all that. That was pretty, pretty good. Okay, so the density's fine. How does, I guess, with all those calculations and everything, I'm fine with the density. I'm impressed that you did all the math to get it right. How does that work for the school impact fees, or?
Yeah, no.
I'm not going to school council yet, but.
No, this was a.
How does that work with a school impact?
Each unit is required to pay a school impact fee.
Whether it's one bedroom or two bedroom.
Correct. There are, for multi-families, there are, so a single family, I'm not, I can't remember exactly what the numbers are, but there is a formula, and it is fractional, again.
I bet he knows it.
Based on the, I can get you close, but I don't.
Single family?
Yeah.
$4,385.
Okay, so a single family is $4,385, and so based on, if you're doing a half a unit, I can't remember if it's quite half, but there is, every unit pays towards the school impact fee. And part of that consideration, you know, to the, to your broader point, one of the things that, as we had talked about before, that when the council had held the workshop and the long-range planning committee sort of looked at this, a lot of the discussion has been around sort of both local and national trends in terms of the type of, I should say, the number of children that you see based on unit types. So I think, you know, we've been provided numbers for other similar projects here in Scarborough. When I say local, I mean very local, of existing apartment complexes, and what their, you know, sort of ratio of children per unit is. And so there has been a pretty, some pretty significant thought into that.
All right, so that's all figured into the, the impact fees, the densities, impact fees reflected by the density.
Density, correct, yep.
Okay. All right. Yeah, other than that, I think it looks good. Thanks. Roger?
Rocky, why, I'm kind of curious, how do you feel about Mrs. Curry's dilemma?
Well, I'd be happy to address that, and she and I did speak, we had a public informational meeting at the church when we first started this whole process, and concern for other people accessing her land was expressed, and I completely understand that. In doing the layout of the project, coming up with where the buildings were going to sit and where the ponds were going to be, I didn't feel like there was a big area where someone would feel like they wanted to access her land, because the best place to do it is right where we're doing our dog park. Would be happy to look at that a little closer in the field to see if some more, you know, maybe some fencing, some additional fencing is needed. But down in the corner where somebody might want to access, you know, we're going to have one of our drainage ponds there, and it's not, I'm not saying somebody wouldn't go there, but it's just not all that inviting, I wouldn't think. And so, as I've said, I'd be happy to take a little closer look in the field and see if some fencing is needed. But we, we do have pretty good control where we manage our own units, and we're pretty selective with that whole process. We do recognize that, you know, that people want to have pets, and so we've been part of our success in other towns is being pet friendly, but we know we have to provide adequate space for that to happen, and so we've tried to do that with this.
Okay. That small parcel at the top there on the right, why did you buy that?
So what we bought. Is that on? That on? Think you're talking about this piece?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, we're buying, I don't own it yet, but we're buying this house on Honan Road, which came with this little tail section of land, and that's going to allow us to put some of our stormwater management right in here. So if you look on some of the other sheets that you have, there's a drainage pond that goes right here.
Right here.
Another drainage pond that goes here.
That's pond three, right?
I don't know the pond numbers off the top of my head. So does that answer your question? That's why we bought this piece, so that we could pick up some area for stormwater management.
Okay. So you're looking to buy that piece of property that is a two-story dwelling with a pool in the backyard?
Correct. So we're going to, this really isn't going to become part of the project, that we'll just, you know, we'll probably sell that eventually. It's a single-family home, it's a very nice home on a nice lot. We're just taking some of this excess land that was with this lot and putting it into this project.
Okay. And I guess I just need a clarification, Jay, on reading your notes about this snow plowing at the end of Honan Road. You made a comment about the 10-foot, you purchased this 10 feet of space there?
I think I'll let our town engineer take this one.
That might have been my comment. I just wanted to point out, now's the time to talk about where Public Works is going to plow at the end of Honan, and I appreciate the fact that we're talking about it now and that we're given actually some more right-of-way and making that truly part of the town right-of-way. I just want to make everybody aware that obviously we push off the end of that, we have very little room to the right-of-way. So in reality, Public Works with a big wheeler is going to push over that property line. And so I was, I was asking, is now the time to look at putting an easement so that we don't have to go in there and pull that out? Just what's realistic for an operational standpoint, that's what.
Can I address that? So what Angela was talking about is, right now, Honan Road ends right here at this line. This section with the background, the town has an easement for that. They don't actually own that land right now. So we identified that early on in conversations with staff and said that, yes, the town could own this, and it makes sense the town, for the town to own that. When we went out and did the survey and figured out what really got built, you can see the pavement's very close to the end of the town existing right-of-way. So what Angela was talking about, I think, is maybe we just give a little more easement area. The town's been plowing this for quite some time, and there's adequate room to put the snow, but the snow lines up on this property. And so I think we can just put an easement area on the plan, and so the town would have a right to the snow there.
Right, and right now.
And I don't think it really is going to hurt anything. I think it may mean that we need to wiggle the sidewalk a little bit, just kind of pull it over a little, give the town a little more room to stack snow in there, but I think it's working now, and I think it can continue to work.
And I guess that's what I wanted to put out. The difference is, right now, that's not developed in there. So now, all of a sudden, when we're pushing, you know, a six or 10-foot snowbank onto what is now, you're showing us, the proposed sidewalk, that's going to mean an issue, I would say. The town shouldn't be doing that, and that we would have to come in and address that. And so I thought, let's talk about it upfront, and if there's an easier way to do that, deal with that.
So I think that's easily answered on the next plan submission. We can just make those adjustments.
Thanks.
Okay, the last question is, on that stretch of Mussy Road, are the utilities right now, like sewer and water and everything, going down to where you're going to be putting in your entrance?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So I don't, I don't understand, I'm glad that, is there a water problem with Mr. White's property because of the gallery development?
So in terms of Mr. White's concern has to do with drainage and stormwater issues? And so, again, I think I'll turn to our town engineer who has some more experience in that realm.
I guess as far as Mr. White's concerned, I did talk with him on the phone as well, he called, and talked a little bit about a lot of, I think his issues, has been a lot of change upstream of him. So, which I will say, how this site specifically claims is downstream of him. So not to discount his issues, because I think he has seen a lot of change, but I think it's a lot of change upstream.
Which is the gallery, right?
Right, and, and those along Mussy Road, like Asian Fusion and other ones before, has seen more recently. And I know with this, this is, we talked early on about minimizing impacts to the wetlands. Wetland is one of those things that obviously kind of works as a sander, a detention area itself. So we've started encroaching in that, and one part of the concern is what happens to that water gets pushed up, let's say, onto the Honan Road backyard. And so I think what, one of the comments early on was about, there is some culverts that have been installed to address some of the overflow that might have to be released out of that wetland area. So I think NCS has done a good job of accounting for that, I guess. And, and I think staff is looking at it in that lens, I guess, to say, how would that impact the neighbors? And I think between the back and forth we've done during the early stages, like that planning board hasn't seen, I think we've kind of gotten to that point where we're looking at those things and dealing with those and the design.
Thanks, Roger. Nick?
Bring us back to that sidewalk for a quick second. Is that a town request to have that there? Or was that a kind of an idea to try to somewhat connect Honan to this neighborhood?
I think I'll take credit for it. I thought it would be a good thing to have, because someone could access that neighborhood and probably make their way down eight-corner store or something if they wanted to. It just felt like, you know, it would be a good idea to have pedestrian access. You know, one of the things that came out of, out of our initial meeting with the neighbors, where they did not want to see Honan Road extended, they didn't want to see our project accessed by Honan Road with vehicular access. So, but I think the, you know, the idea of pedestrian access makes sense to a lot of people, and that's why I put it on the plan. Now that I look at it really closely, it's not quite in the right place, but I think it could, it could move, and then it would give somebody access to, they want to walk their dog or take a walk.
Yeah, I think that's probably actually where my concern stems, is now are you kind of helping traffic flow onto Honan Road, where they expressed that they weren't so keen on traffic flow, whether it's vehicular or personnel. I worry because most people walk in the straightest line, the shortest distance possible. And with the gallery shops not terribly far away, I can see a clear cut-through here to, you know, through somebody's yard, somebody thinking that they're going to, you know, save some time and take the, take the shorter route. But I, if it's, you know, if it was me, if it's not necessary, it's not going to require the connectivity, don't do it. I mean, and we're going to have a problem with the plowing, you know, somebody's going to have to clear the sidewalk where the snow is going to sit, right? You can't, can't leave it blocked, so. I mean, my question is, why are you going to have it?
Because my, my comment was not about Honan, so I just wanted to be clear with that, because there is no sidewalk from their entrance to Honan, so there is no, I mean, it's not probably a safe walk for those residents on Honan to go along Mussy to get to the sidewalk, where this might be an opportunity.
And I think our standards do typically seek to make those pedestrian connections where feasible. And I think one of the things that we've worked on in this project, and, you know, maybe I didn't articulate at the outset, is the applicant is providing for a sidewalk connection from their entrance down to Gallery, to Boulevard Drive, the intersection where you go up into Walmart and loads, and those sites where there is.
Along Mussy Road, right?
Along Mussy Road, but they aren't, so sort of the connection through to Honan Road is in lieu of sort of developing a sidewalk along what's shown as sort of the wetland area, if you will, or the non-developed area of their parcel, enables sort of that connection through their site.
On the wet, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So that is not a sidewalk on?
Correct. There's no sidewalk from, from the intersect from there, drive down towards Honan Road.
Now I understand. Thank you. All right, makes more sense now, Rocky. Good job. And then my final comment is on your colors. I'm fine with a single continuous kind of feel to the neighborhood. I guess my follow-up question then would be, if they ever wanted to go back and repaint them, would they come in front of us and ask us permission to repaint the building? So what, this is, my question is this, why are we delving in? I mean, I could see as a standard and a design, we want it to look nice. I get that. But if he ever wanted to change the paint color, is that we're not expecting him to come back and ask us permission, are we?
Well, the design standards talk about the board approving the architecture, deciding the materials, the colors. So ultimately, I guess that would be, if the board doesn't feel that that would be necessary, then that could be stipulated and stated. But that is what the design standards, that is what the board's charging.
Fifteen years when that paint starts to flake, right?
It's actually vinyl slide.
Vinyl's final, right? I'm okay with them. I'm going to dramatic look to it.
We also have our administrative review process where we try to expedite certain elements like that, we work through the chair. So if your cards are right on the chair, you can.
All right, I'm good. It's fine. It looks like a good project. I hope you can work something out with me, Butter, regarding the concerns about the private property.
Thanks. Rocky, could you refresh my memory on what the comment was? It was the very beginning of the presentation, I think. I'm not sure I totally followed at the time. The response to the stormwater outfall?
Yes, I think she asked about what, what it was that we were talking about with stormwater outfall.
Well, going back even further than that, your engineer, I think, made brief reference to, I think, a recent change that was made that we made.
to, I think, a recent change that was made that we may not have seen, or maybe I didn't follow that correctly.
I'm not, I'm not following you.
What I thought I heard, and maybe I misunderstood, but what I thought I heard was some reference to a, to a response to the concern or the suggestion that the outfalls be pulled out away from the...
Oh, sure, okay, I understand what you're talking about now. So I think Angela wanted us to look a little more closely to see if we could pull some of those outfalls back
Right.
Out of the 75-foot setback, and what Tony was pointing out is that we've already gone to the DEP and got it approved as it's designed, so we need to look at it, obviously we need to want to work with Angela and try to come up with ways to minimize the impact on that, but what I think we proposed, you know, should be acceptable, certainly it's acceptable to state, I would hope it would be acceptable to the town, but we certainly will take a look, you know, we're going to be meeting with Angela, so we'll take a look at what we could do to try to minimize that. One of the things, and it's very difficult with stormwater management now, to work with, work with all your grades, and we're trying to minimize fill impacts, we're trying to minimize wetland impacts, we are hemmed in, you know, pretty heavily on the site with wetland on one side and stream on the other, but we certainly, Tony's going to take a look at it, and we'll chat with Angela, if we can come up with a little, a little something that could make it better.
All right, thanks, I appreciate that, and appreciate the clarification. So just going through the themes and the notes here, and I think you're, you're in pretty good shape here overall, I appreciate the willingness to work with the town on easement for the snow storage area, willingness to work with the butter on keeping people off the property. I would think that, at least in, you know, based on my own experience and probably yours as well, that just the mere fact that you, this site will be fully developed, and there will be people living there, it'll be actively managed, as I think you suggested, that itself should serve to discourage some of the trespassing or loitering that might otherwise go on, because it's very clearly, visibly, private property.
Things like, you know, people dumping leaves and that sort of thing, that's all going to be taken care of by us, and, you know, those kinds of infringements are certainly easily handled.
In terms of the architecture, I'm, I'm fine with the colors, and it's really not, as you pointed out, it's really not monochromatic, it's, you've got sort of that two-tone with the sage on the top, which I, you know, again, not that we want to micromanage this, when I happen to, I think that's a good look, and I think it is consistent with our design standards. Related to that, and also connected to the design standards, staff did have a comment about the utility rooms which face the parking areas, I don't know if you could give some, a little more consideration, I'm not thinking about anything exotic, but maybe just a little bit more architectural detail in the doors or something like that.
I'd like to touch on that, if Jay's flipping through pictures here, but keep going. I'll let you know when you find it.
All right.
There it is. Okay, so that's a picture of a very similar building that we built over in Westbrook, and that's the side that I would envision most people would find most offensive, it's the side with our, with our boiler room, and what we've done with this updated plan on this particular side of the building is, I don't know if my, you can see where there are HVAC units here, there's electrical meters, this has a shed roof design here, we've changed it, Jay, if you can change now to, keep going, should be there. So, we've extended our, we've gone to a flat roof, which our architect has, feels it looks a lot better than the shed roof, it has a little railing on the top and kind of blends in with the rest of the railing system there, we've extended the room out, and these two doors right on the very end, that's going to house all of those meters, all those electric meters will be behind there. I think one of the staff comments was, you know, that these doors shouldn't just be a flat, plain old door, and that's, that's sort of what's drawn, but it's certainly, you know, I would use an embossed door there to make it, make it look better. Next to the, next to that, you can see some lattice work here on two sides, and that's designed to shield those HVAC units that go on the side of the building, and so then Keith Smith, our landscape architect, Keith is here tonight, could answer questions if you have any, has designed a pretty elaborate landscaping package for this, this neighborhood, and so we really feel like we greatly improved the way that looks, and should really be acceptable.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Hopefully Ms. Auguste will be here for the landscaping.
I was disappointed to see she wasn't here, I got heat there and everything.
Okay, well, thank you for that, all right, I just want to make sure I'm not leaving any loose ends here. I think that pretty well covers it between my comments, questions, and those that others have. Again, as you alluded to, you've got a DEP permit in, so right now what we'd be considering is preliminary subdivision approval, unless others have other additional comments or questions, I'm going to motion forward, simple motion forward to that effect. I'll move to approve Resberry Properties LLC's request for preliminary subdivision and site plan approval for residential subdivision at 79 Muzzy Road, Assessor's Map, R-55, Lot 18.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck. We have a staff report?
Yeah, I have two items to report on, one I've already touched on once, but I'll want to be sure I echo, we are beginning the comprehensive planning process, this is going to be a year and a half or two-year plan, planning process culminating any plan for the future of the community. The first public kickoff is next Tuesday, the 23rd, at 6:30, right here in Chambers, so hopefully people are able to join us and start the conversation, this is really, as I said, this is the start of our conversation. Throughout the summer months, going into the fall, there'll be many more opportunities for discussion, so we're pretty excited about this, the long-range planning committee has been doing a lot of work gearing up for this activity, and so we hope everyone here on the planning board and those at home are able to join us. Another thing I just want to make mention of, another project that our department has been working on and is culminating in a public meeting, is the Higgins Beach Form-Based Character Code. One of the commitments this community made when we adopted that zoning was to do an audit of the zoning, and so the zoning's been in place about a year and a half, we've been through a couple of building cycles, and so we are going through, as I said, an audit process, and so, again, working through the long-range planning committee and the neighborhood in Higgins Beach, there'll be a public meeting on June 11th, that's actually a Sunday, it's 10 to 1, it's really an open house, an opportunity for people to come in, there isn't going to be sort of a formal presentation as part of this, it's just an opportunity, as I said, for folks in the neighborhood to come in, express their likes, dislikes, what's worked, maybe things that could use some tweaking moving forward, so we can really continue to refine that, that code, so.
Where is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, that will be at the, at the Association's Clubhouse, the Higgins Beach Association's Clubhouse, right down there, thank you for bringing that up, the location, so those are the two items I had, Angela, do you have anything you want to?
Thank you. Is there an administrative amendment report?
Yep, I have one item to report on, the Holy Donut Site, former Tim Hortons, they are adding a shed sort of in the back corner, back behind their dumpsters, so we're in the process of working through the finer details, but ultimately that has received administrative approval.
When are they going to put it in the parking garage?
Step by step, yeah.
Any planning board correspondence beyond the email that was referenced earlier? Nope? Okay, any planning board comments?
We had a transportation committee meeting, and just three things that I think might be of interest is, one, we talked about upgrading and synchronizing the signals on Route 1, supposedly if you catch it right, you can drive Rachel without having to stop. There was also...
Has that ever been done?
No, it's a secret, we're not going to let it out. There was another interesting discussion about the crosswalk, the signals to various crosswalks, in particular along Route 114, and you can have, you can't have too many, because if you have too many, then they get ignored, or, so, you know, you have to have a certain number, so they become meaningful to people. And the last thing I'll mention is, we had a discussion about the roads, and it's interesting because we have, we have too many roads in Scarborough that do not meet main DOP, DOT standards, and because they don't meet the standards, we can't take advantage of their funding for repaving, so, you know, we're missing, they don't have adequate, there's a variety of different criteria, but we just have a lot of, we have probably more roads in Scarborough as a percentage than some of our surrounding communities, and because of that, we can't, they don't meet those standards, we can't take advantage of state funding for repairing, so, I thought that was kind of an interesting point. I don't have a fourth one, that was it.
Back to us when you have a solution.
We're working on the solution.
Sounds like a bit of a catch-22 to me. Interesting, thank you. I have a question for staff, and it's relevant to one of the items that we had this evening, could you update us on what's happening with the Asian Fusion site and the cutting that took place there and the setback issue there?
Sure. I think as I previously indicated, staff has issued a notice violation for the property, as has DEP, one of the sort of timeframe items that needs to be most addressed moving forward is the replanting along the stream, so we have received a copy of a revegetation plan, and the expectation is that that, again, per the, per the violation letters that are out there, is that the revegetation needs to be done by June 30th, but in discussions, I think we're going to be meeting out there on-site pretty soon, would be landscaper. I do just want to note that I did mention that that's what needs to be done moving forward, what we've been doing in the meantime is having a, continuing to have the site inspected to be sure that the, the stream bank is stabilized, and, you know, we aren't having any erosion fall in the stream, and that whatever is is being picked up by some stone check dams and other appropriate measures are occurring out there. I should note, the expectation is, based on the conversations I've had, the Afcon, they want to come back to this board for a sketch plan review, so I think we'll see that at our next meeting, if it's not the next meeting, I would envision then the other, our next meeting in June, but they are gearing up to come back before the board and then re-engage the site plan review process. One of the issues that was identified, and again, I may have mentioned this previously, but in, now that they've gone back to the site, there's identified that the extent of the stream on the property wasn't picked up quite accurately and correctly on the first round of plans that were approved by the board, so we're having them restart the site plan review process, depicting the full extent of the stream and really going through that whole process.
Okay. All right, that was an approval that was, that was done before some who are currently on the board have joined the board, so it'd be a good opportunity to get ready to plan with them, especially with what's happened there recently. All right, thank you, any other planning board comments or questions? All right, I guess we've cut into the Celtics ratings enough, so with that, I'll move to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.